I'm Andy Nowssiger, EEA President, Breyer. I'm here tonight because we need you, the decision makers, to clearly understand what the Reduced Education Plan represents. This year, we were promised staffing would be done better, that the district would allocate the correct staffing to buildings in the spring to avoid the chaos seen in the past few years. We were told the district wasn't increasing the staffing ratio to balance the budget. Very little of this turned out to be true. While the district did not technically increase the staffing ratio, they're still not staffing honestly. The 29-to-1 staffing allocation for secondary is based on students taking five classes instead of six, which is absurd, since students must take six classes to graduate on time. Here's a real example. Mount Lake Terrace High School was allocated 1.9 FTE less in social studies for next year. In real terms, that means the district thinks Terrace needs nine fewer social studies classes, another absurdity, given that most of the current social studies classes are well over 30, with some as high as 42. Where are they supposed to put the 270 students from the eliminated classes? I asked a cabinet member why schools were being deliberately understaffed. The answer: To staff for six classes would require 17% more staffing. They said that they're not increasing the staffing ratio, yet they're understaffing secondary by 17%. That's not honest. This practice puts administrators in an impossible situation. They must cut electives to avoid core classes of 40. It shifts blame for cutting valued programs to the principals, which isn't fair. The board is concerned about graduation rates, and our district wants sense of belonging to be the focus of future SIP goals. There's no doubt that students who feel a connection to their school are more likely to graduate. However, everything about this Reduced Education Plan runs counter to improving graduation rates and a sense of belonging. You know where students most often find connections to their school? Music, drama, journalism, and other electives that are being cut. Furthermore, no research has ever shown that a student's learning and sense of belonging increase in a class of 40. If you choose these cuts, be thrilled if our graduation rates and test scores remain status quo. That means our staff are performing miracles, because we are on an untenable trajectory. If you want student achievement and graduation rates to increase, you need to make some tough choices. There is no doubt the state is failing to adequately fund education. However, a $20 million ending fund balance represents about 5.2%, and is enough for a well-run district of our size. There's some capacity in the ending fund balance to make fewer cuts. I'll put my other suggestions in an email because of the three-minute limit. You're in a tough position, but you're not helpless. My first suggestion to Rebecca was for all districts in this deficit situation to link arms and go into receivership together, forcing the state to address the underfunding issue, rather than the death-by-a-thousand-paper-cuts approach to the budget being taken. That was dismissed. And so, since you're apparently not ready for revolution, please ask some tough questions. Don't say one thing and have your votes tell a different story. We can do better than this Reduced Education Plan. Thanks.
Next is Suzanne Wallace.
Good evening. Okay, awesome. Okay, all right. Good evening. I'm Suzanne Wallace. I am the co-department chair of the World Language Department and the French teacher at Meadowdale High School. So currently, French III, or Third-Year French, and German III are on the chopping blocks for next year at Meadowdale High. And I wanted to bring attention to some perhaps unintended consequences of this that haven't been fully thought through by some of the decision makers. Just hoping that the district will keep world language in mind when there may be additional restricted funding that is passed down. So, a major issue: Without three years of a world language in high school, students are not competitive applicants to selective colleges like UW or University of California, period. So, right now, my French I and French II students are facing this scary prospect. They might have no real chance to be admitted to universities that they have been preparing for for years, and they are angry, and they feel betrayed by the adults in charge. And we've been having a lot of conversations about this, and their feelings are clear. My second point is that without Third-Year French and German, we're not actually just talking about Third-Year. Without Third-Year, those programs collapse completely, because students don't sign up for them in the first place when they are no longer a real college prep pathway. Right? So, we're not just talking about cutting French III and German III. We're talking about cutting French and cutting German. So, rolling forward, without French and German in a couple of years at Meadowdale High, that would leave just Spanish and American Sign Language at Meadowdale. Okay? So, if we play that out, what about our native Spanish speakers who want to take a language? What if they don't want to take ASL? Do they not deserve options like everyone else? We haven't offered Spanish for native speakers in years. Right? And in addition to sending the message that our Spanish speakers don't deserve a choice like everyone else, ASL as their only option sends a really insulting message, because I don't know if you're aware, but ASL has the reputation of being the language for the less academic students, because it's not a written language and it's cross-listed with CTE. For a lot of reasons, I think that perception is completely wrong, and it's super problematic. And that's a whole different topic that's not for tonight, but that is the reputation among many students and also from messaging I've gotten from admin. So, in one fell swoop, we're shutting the door to competitive colleges for a large number of our currently enrolled most academically-driven students. And at the same time, in a couple of years, when French and German are gone, Spanish speakers will be getting the message that their class preferences matter less than their peers, and the only language for them is the one with the reputation of being the one for the less academic kids, which I find horrifically insulting. So, I think if these world language cuts go through, it will just be hard to say with credibility that Edmunds District is actually college prep. Thanks.
Next is Amy Frost.
Is it on? No. What do I need? Yeah? Okay, cool. All right. My name is Amy Frost. I teach at Linwood High School. I'm also the Edmunds EA Vice President, and I have other roles I've served that I'll talk about in a bit. You're going to hear from a lot of folks about how this Reduced Staffing Plan impacts kids in classes, and I think we know it. We're seeing increases in behaviors in schools. We're seeing attendance issues. We're seeing the inability to get kids to class when they're in the building. Class sizes are astronomical. Student needs are higher than they've ever been before. And programs that are on the chopping block are very, very, very important to students. And you will hear, I'm sure, that people in buildings feel broken. The workload is higher than it's ever been. I've been doing this for 20 years. I'm working now more on weekends than I ever have before, largely just because of new diverse student needs and huge class sizes as a history teacher. But one of the other roles I've gotten to serve is, for the last eight years, I was on the Professional Educator Standards Board. I also served as the chair for four years until I termed out this year. So, I've been involved in statewide initiatives around cultural competency, around what educator prep needs to do to be able to continue to be an educator prep program, around what restoring the educator, diversifying the educator workforce looks like. So, please know when I say this, I'm committed to reform. I don't think that the status quo is what we need, but I also need you to hear that with these Reduced Educational Plans, our staff ability to take on any kind of district initiatives is going to be essentially next to nothing. We tried to just survey our folks to see if they'd be willing to give up five minutes of their planning time to help monitor hallways, and the response we got is, sure, if I felt supported by my overtaxed admin and our re-engagement team, who's also been short-staffed throughout, I'm guessing potential cuts to sinks will magnify this. Sure, if five minutes of my time wasn't so important in my day. So, when we are asking people to do basic things like patrol, like, not patrol, I shouldn't use that word, like monitor the hallways and help get kids in class to help, you know, create a sense of belonging, the answer is generally no, because staff are so overwhelmed. Restorative practices in the past is another great example. It's never been fully staffed, and as a result, it's never been fully implemented, and it's perceived by many staff as cup of noodles in the office and not real good practice. So, please, keep in mind when you make these cuts, we're going to do our best. We're going to try to hold it together. We're going to try to teach our kids, but make a plan next year around professional development that recognizes that we are at capacity and will be more taxed next year.
So, there are two people listed together. I'm assuming that means you're going to present together. Annika Backstrom and Amita Rabarad. Did I say that okay? Close enough? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Annika.
And my name is Amita. We are sophomore students at Edmunds Woodway High School, and we are entering.
Good evening. My name is Annika.
And my name is Amita. We are sophomore students at Edmunds Woodway High School, and we are entering the IB program. We came to speak with you today about our experiences in our school regarding the current climate crisis.
Our knowledge on climate change has grown tremendously as our social studies class was assigned a research project regarding this issue. We were to study the reasons behind the climate change around the U.S., but what stood out most were the simple things that surrounded us every day, and this is actually causing the most problems, even though they are the simplest to reduce, if it is given the right attention. Prior to this project, we had a very limited understanding of this topic, as we were not exposed to it in previous years.
We are aware of the conservation policy that has been developed in the district and the role it plays in our community, but we don't notice action taking place. We propose a goal for students to become actively aware of how climate change is affecting our environment today. We want to implement a more disciplined set curriculum by devoting a period of time or a unit to study this issue. Seeing the passion our classmates had learned about this, we are confident that other students will put their efforts towards making the change, too.
Our academic future is not the only necessity of school learning. That's why we will benefit from making climate change in established unit in our curriculum. With this crisis continuing to grow each year, we will have a variety of aspects that teachers can make a different approach on. For younger kids, lectures in a class will board them, so field trips will make students feel like they can help. Research from BYU found that students who attend educational field trips actually become more cautious about their surrounding environment.
Middle schoolers would most likely be interested in projects that they can be a leader in. Brad Prophet at Majona K-8 began a student leadership program for his couple of classes called the Student Activism and Leadership Team, or SALT. This gave students the opportunity to find projects they were interested in regarding climate issues and learn to make a valuable change. Teachers had to devote their extra time to this program, but students seemed very interested in the topic. We understand the urgency to act for our future, but we are afraid that we are the only, one of the only classes addressing this, so others aren't having the opportunity to be educated.
Incorporating a climate change education into our curriculum benefits students by encouraging them to become advocates for a more sustainable future. The PEW Research Center study says that 71% of our generation's respondents believe climate change to be one of their biggest societal and political concerns right now. By starting to inform younger kids today, they will develop an understanding and passion of how human activities are affecting the environment.
Not only does this education encourage students to make a difference, but it also prepares them for challenges ahead. According to the National Education Association, incorporating climate change into the curriculum helps students develop critical thinking skills, problem-solving abilities, and the sense of environmental responsibility. But if this is not a required curriculum, how do we know students will be getting any education on the climate crisis at all?
We understand you have limited time, and there are other necessary topics to consider for our school district, but this is a major issue affecting our future and the world right now, and we hope you take this into consideration. Thank you.
I want to thank you for coming and sharing. Hearing student voices is very important to us, and you talked about a very important topic. Next is Wyatt Arons.
Hi. My name is Wyatt Arons from, I am a student in the fifth-grade challenge at Terrace Park Elementary, and I've come to discuss the canceling of band and orchestra. I really enjoy band and orchestra, and I just, I think it would be extremely, I think it would just be devastating if you canceled it, because it means a lot to so many students. And I just feel that, I mean, it's just, I love band and orchestra. It's, I play cello, and, I mean, it's just amazing. My teacher is amazing, and she might lose her orchestra, I mean, my orchestra teacher. My orchestra teacher is amazing, and she might lose her job if you cancel orchestra. And I have this, my best friend is in fourth grade, and he's really looking forward to doing band orchestra, and I just really think, I'd be really sad if you canceled band and orchestra, because it means a lot to so many people. Also, if you cancel band orchestra just for elementary school, it's going to have an effect on middle school and high school, because they won't be starting at the same level, or some of them won't be starting at the same level as they would if they had already started to practice during elementary school. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Next is Jason Moore.
Jason Moore, Linwood. I was reviewing the agenda for the meeting today and saw the proposed cuts. I know those aren't concrete as yet, and you're working on that, but I saw that they're cutting, possibly planning to cut, you know, paraeducators and professional technical positions. I believe, you know, I've just been learning more about paraeducators, and it sounds like they are very important to, you know, maintaining some type of order in these chaotic classrooms that we have, so that would probably be unfortunate. So, we would like to know, you know, the people of this district would like to know how many diversity, equity, and inclusion positions are there in the district, and what is the total amount that the taxpayers are spending on these positions? Because if you're going to make cuts to positions in the district, you know, that should be number one on the chopping block, I believe, because it's least important for these students to be successful. DEI is racist, discriminatory, anti-family, and it's anti-American. It's also a liability to the district and taxpayers. There are many lawsuits going down across the country targeting DEI programs for being exactly that, racist and discriminatory. Don't get caught unprepared. Start defunding DEI today and focus on math, English, and science instead. And also, on a side note, what is the district and the board going to do about all of these assaults and fights with female students getting knocked unconscious in the bathrooms? This is totally unacceptable. I grew up, and I got into several fights when I was younger. I've never seen anybody get knocked out in a school, let alone female students. So, we need to figure out what this problem is and deal with it, because this is totally unacceptable. Thank you.
Next is Sharon Cole Seth. Tell me how you say your last name. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Cole Seth from the Work Experiences, formerly Work Adjustment Program with the district. I've been with the district for over 20 years, and work adjustment started seven years ago. Now, work experiences, I said. We take students in to our program from all the different high schools, and we work on vocational training. This program was started over 40 years ago by parents and admin to make an environment that would help our students be successful with learning disabilities. So, they come to us for half the day, and then they spend half the day at their home high school. And we've been told of a decision to dismantle the program and to recreate it, reassemble it, in all of the different schools now. This decision, it was made without the input of the program director, Sue Daniels, who's been running it successfully, magnificently, for 25 years. So, thankfully, Dr. Minor is going to meet with our group. That's May 1st. I do hope you're not going to make any decisions to dismantle this program before that meeting. Brainstorming and ideas and creative ideas on how to preserve this program was not explored to our knowledge, and there are several of them. Part of reasoning for this, by the way, and understand, is the elective, I'm sorry, the credit requirements for special ed, but we were also told they would have access to electives, which we hear are being cut. So, I just want to say, my job, I work with, I want to tell just a few minutes, my job is to work with these students. I take them out in the community, I, they learn how to use community transit, how to explore the resources. We have libraries, city hall, recreation centers. We serve the community every week at Annie's Kitchen in Edmunds. Every Wednesday, thanks to our students, they're able to set up tables and prep food. And that is just a little picture of what we do and what we teach them. They practice time management, success, pride in their work, time. We have it, a curriculum that is, well, it's a gem, and it really hasn't been noticed, and that is fine, but before you dismantle it, please take a good look at it. Please look at the opportunities, the solutions that you would have, and not to have to lose it and throw it all away.
And next is Doug Troost. I know you, but I don't know that I still pronounced your last name right.
You got it correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Doug Troost. I'm a parent of two children in the district and a teacher at Edmunds Woodway High School. Every year, this is my 21st year in Edmunds School District, and it seems like every single year that I can recall, we get into a budget crunch. We let newer, younger teachers go who are lower down on the totem pole, so to speak. And then, we get to August, and we have to hire a bunch of new teachers. Many of these younger teachers are amazing. They're incredible teachers, and we want to retain them, but by the time we've already let them go, we go back to them, they moved on. They found a job up in Everett, or Shoreline, or somewhere else, and we lose these teachers. And it always puts us in a crunch. How do we get here every single year? And it seems like we're going down that similar path again. Another thing that we end up having is, in this case, your AP and your IB classes. It looks like, the way things are presenting themselves, we're going to be staffing them at, say, 35 to 39 students in a class, which is grossly overstaffed. AP and IB classes are recommended to be staffed at 20 to 23. We're looking at 35 or greater. Okay? That's what we're hearing, whether that's true, but that's what the rumors are at this point. But then again, they might not be, because they've happened before. Another point is, teacher burnout is real. I don't know if you realize how low staff morale is right now, and has been for a number of years, and it's unbelievably low. And it seems to come about to another thing, oh, and another thing, and teachers, here's another thing, oh, and, oh, and another thing, and another thing. I can't remember the last time something was actually taken off my plate. And just like Amy Frost said, I'm putting in more time than I ever have, and it's at the expense of what I can put into my lessons. It's real, and at the expense of what I can put in towards my students. Last but not least, your paraeducators also need you. They're grossly underpaid. They are getting cuts. They don't know whether they're going to be around next year. And they're also vital to the support of our IEP students, which uphold federal and state law. If we don't have enough paraeducators, it leaves us wide open to lawsuits on multiple levels. We have to have these people, and they're fundamental to the connection to our kids. And on that, our kids deserve better. And I would challenge you as a school board to do better, and we, as a school district, need to do better. Thank you.
And next, we have another pair, Kaylee Markeith and Kira Miller.
I'm Kaylee. I'm Kaylee Markeith.
I'm Kira Miller.
And we're from Cedar Way Elementary.
And we are here to discuss eliminating band and orchestra.
And we would like to say that there's so many kids that would like to do band and orchestra that have been waiting, and now, that if we do eliminate it, that they won't have the chance to do that without a vote.
And there, I know that there are many kids that don't know what is going on, and that we are here talking about it right now, and there are a lot of kids that don't know what's going on, and they don't have a say in this at all, and...
Also, there's some classmates and stuff that are inside of our class that weren't able to make it, and they would have said something, but we are here today to speak for them and speak for ourselves, that we'd like to be able to keep it, because we've, some of us have, like, planned some of our lives out for, like, orchestra and that stuff. And once we start eliminating fifth and sixth-grade orchestra, that it could work our ways up to seventh, eighth, ninth, and et cetera.
I know that, me specifically, I would have a bad day at school, and then, let's say it was a Tuesday, I knew that I would have, like, a bad day at school, and then, at the end of the day, I know that I would be going to orchestra class, and as soon as I walk into that class, I get to see my orchestra teacher's face, and as soon as I see her face, my face just lights up, and I end up getting all happy.
Our orchestra teacher is an amazing person. She's always made a school an amazing place to be, and making me look forward to those days.
We are also speaking for the fifth graders and fourth graders and all the years below us that have watched fifth graders and sixth graders walk into school with this big thing in plastic or cloth in their hands on these two specific days of the week, and they're like, what's going on? But this seems so fun. Or they're at recess, and they hear us in one of the portables, playing this, playing on these amazing instruments, and they're looking forward to being able to play that one day.
I have a little brother that's inside of fourth grade, and I just think that he'd have a lot of fun inside of band or something, and being able to play one of those instruments and be able to go and make loud noises.
We have multiple friends or younger kids that are in fourth grade that are, that have seen us specifically walk into school with, like, me a cello or her a viola, and then they are like, wow, I want to be like them. Thank you.
Thank you.